Go ahead and order the city council regular meeting. Could we have roll call?
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I invite everyone on council or on the dais and in the audience to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the safe and American and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to move the approval of the meeting minutes for the November 28th council meeting out of the consent agenda.
So you have to do that during the consent agenda, but we'll remember it.
Sorry.
It's okay. Otherwise, we're good.
Otherwise, we're good.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have presentations, distinguished service awards to councilman for your former councilwoman, council members Barbara Canez and Karen Miller. They're not present, so we'll move from there. Next, public comment for items on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The comments for items that's on the agenda are just a comment. Questions will not be answered from the council. Anyone that wants to speak regarding anything on the agenda, please come to the podium. Hearing none, moving on to the consignment agenda. We need the approval of that.
So I would like to move to move the special city council meeting, November 28th, 2023, meeting minutes out of the consent agenda.
Okay.
And I'd also like to pull out the revenue and expense report on page 39.
Does anybody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the two exceptions currently stated.
Thank you. It's been moved to second. There is no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. First up to discuss will be the special city council meeting, 11/28/23.
Yes, so the meeting minutes indicate that I was at the meeting, but I was not in the country, so they also indicate that I seconded a motion that I couldn't possibly have seconded, so.
Was that the going into closed session, or was that coming out of?
It was the motion. Hold on a second.
There's a motion to excuse Councilmember Jennings.
The motion to direct the city attorney to continue negotiations with the city administrator candidate.
Yeah, so I made that motion. I don't know who seconded it.
It says I seconded it, but I did not.
I think I made the second.
I'll set with that. Anything else in there?
No, that's it.
Okay. Next, revenue, page 39.
Yeah, sorry, Tim, I didn't get to this one earlier because I didn't notice it until later this afternoon.
That's okay.
But on page 39, under public safety, under sidewalk maintenance, the amended budget isn't correct. We amended that budget on July 17th to remove $220,000 of expenses out of that line item, and it never got reflected in the sidewalk maintenance amended budget.
I'll go look at that.
And that's all I have.
Okay, so who would like to make the motion to accept the special city council meetings, 11/28/23, with the corrections?
I will make the motion to approve the meeting minutes with the, from the November 28 special meeting with the corrections noted.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion for the revenue update for page 39 under the November dispersal report.
I'll make the motion to approve the change to the revenue and expense report on page 39.
It's your second.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have action requests for consideration for approval is the approval of the fiscal year 2022/23 audit report.
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022/2023 final audited financial statements.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
No, I was just gonna say that just the only, I mean, for full disclosure, I mean, they went, it wasn't approved at the November meeting because the auditors were not aware that we had done amendments, budget amendments in, in June.
July, January, and June.
January and June. So they did, they did find one other kind of hand slap associated with that because the former city administrator and the budget amendments that were put before us had a budget deficit in the, there was no real deficit, but the way that the budget read, there was a deficit in the major and local road funds. And legally, because of Public Act 2, you can't budget a deficit, so.
Well, it is. It's a line item. That was a deficit.
Yeah, so both of those, both of those balances are healthy balances in the local and major road funds, so we don't have a deficit in there. But the way that it showed up on those line items was incorrect, and so we got a notice in the audit because of it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything?
Mayor, before we take a vote on this, I believe this item was placed on the table last month, so there would be a motion to take it off the table before the motion approved.
Who would like to make the motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take the 2022/23 audit report off the table.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Roll call.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, back to the audit report. Is there any other further detail, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, we have the consideration of approval for the administrator's contract.
Yes, Mayor, council, the, you had instructed the city attorney to reach an agreement with the candidate for the city administrative position, and Michael Green has the, has approved, or has decided to come aboard with Lather Village, and this is his contract in front of you, and he would be starting January 3 if you approve the contract.
Thank you. Who would like to make the motion to approve the administrator's contract?
Motion to approve the employment agreement with Michael Green for services as the city administrator, starting January 3, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, it looked like reflective of everything we talked about. Was there anything?
No, there were no additional changes beyond just the compensation package. Everything else was agreed to as presented.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up for consideration for approval is the board of review meeting dates, March, July, and December.
Yes, Mayor and council, every year we have to approve the board of review minute, or board of review dates. The March dates are for anybody that wants to come in and argue their, or their taxable value, their SEV, anything like that. That's when they can come in. July and December boards are for hardship applications and also for clerical errors. So March and the two March meetings, they will get their notice in sometime in the beginning of February for what their taxable value will be for next year, and then they can take it to the board at that time if they have any discussion about it or if they don't feel it's correct. And these are the dates that we have and the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 board of review meeting schedule.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion?
I just, can you, can someone read out the dates publicly?
Hi, Kim. The first session is on Thursday, March 7th, commencing at 8:30 a.m. until 12 noon and 1 p.m. until 5:30 p.m. The second session will be Thursday, March 14th, commencing at 1 p.m. until 4 p.m. and then recommencing at 6 p.m. till 9 p.m. The summer and winter sessions are January, or I'm sorry, on Tuesday, July 16th at 9 a.m. and Tuesday, December 10th at 9 a.m.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we have the consideration for approval of the water department fee schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve the water and sewer fee schedule with the exceptions that were noted in the study session, which were the $200 fee for homeowner requested testing to be changed to $275, and I don't have the other one that was the wording on the.
I have it.
You want to say what it was?
Yeah, I was just removing the references to the different fee categories in the notes that are at the, on page three and four of the, of the schedule provided.
Actually, it was on page two.
It was on page two.
Page two and three.
At homeowner, property owner's request is responsible for cost to meter.
Right.
Yes, correct.
That was the other one.
Did I do that all right? Oh, yeah. Moved and, it's been moved to second. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have to adopt special assessment resolution and schedule public hearing for January 22nd, 2023.
Mayor and council, every year at this time, we send a roll, a roll of anything that is on the books as of October 31st for water, sidewalk payments, ditch and culvert payments, anything that has not been paid. And so we are, these, this is the list. It will be published in the newspaper. For the special hearing, we will be sending out letters to all the, anybody that's on the list for that. They do have up until February 29th to pay the bills, and that will be after the public hearing. They'll be able, they'll also receive a letter to tell them that they have up until February 8th to pay those. If they are not paid by February 20th, then they will be rolled over to the person, or to people's real property tax bills.
Motion to adopt the attached resolution and set the public hearing for special assessments for January 22nd, 2024 at 7:30 p.m.
Second.
It's moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, it's the appointment of the planning commissioner. We had three.
You, four.
Four. Wait, I'm sorry, because I'm trying to find it now. I don't have the actual, they're not in the packet, are they?
I have them right here.
Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to find. We had four people?
Yep.
Did you say five?
Four.
No, it's four.
Four. Four people apply, and it is my recommendation to appoint James Scusell to the planning commission because of his experience in program development and construction and federal state licensing.
Motion to appoint James Scusell, or Scusell, however you want to say it, to the Lather Village Planning Commission.
Oh, and I'm sorry. And he's also part of putting together the dog park, right?
That's true. He was on the dog park board.
Sorry, go ahead. So there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is the approval.
I just want to encourage the, the other applicants who were not chosen. We have other positions that'll be opening up for other boards, and we encourage you to apply for those.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the 2024 city council meeting dates and city observed holidays. Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to adopt the 2024 city council meeting schedule.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next will be the consideration of approval for the laundromat ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Garrett, members of the city council, members of the public. My name is Eric Peach with Giffords Webster, the city's planning consultant. The item next on your agenda is for the amendment to the ordinance for laundromat. And back in May of this year, the city received an application for a remodel and renovation of a commercial property just south of here. And part of that was for tenant spaces to be proposed for retail, and then one of them was, of course, a laundromat. And so the city felt it was necessary for the planning commission to consider whether or not the laundromat use would fit under personal services, which is a permitted use within the mixed-use district of where this would be located, or if the commission felt it was more appropriate to consider an amendment. And so in, in May, the planning commission considered amendment language, and so Giffords Webster was tasked to provide amendment language for the planning commission to consider in the months of June and July of this year. And so, just refer to my notes here. So the first PC meeting was held in June, and then in July, the planning commission recommended considering a public hearing in August. And so after much deliberation, the planning commission forwarded to the, to the city council in August. The city council met in September. However, the item was tabled, and so during that time, the site plan was reviewed and continued to be reviewed. The applicant had stated that they would do away with the laundromat use and potentially consider a restaurant in its place since there's been no action on whether or not laundromat use would move forward. So I don't know if you have in your packet, there's the proposed use. So nothing has changed on the memo that was issued originally in October, but we've gotten word from the applicant that they would like to reconsider the, the ordinance for laundromat use. And so within that, within that amendment is the parking count, the proposed parking count, which was a significant consideration of the planning commission because one of the things that is a challenge for commercial reuses along Southfield Corridor particularly is that parking is a challenge. And so one of the things that the planning commission was tasked with is to, what is the appropriate use or requirement impact for a parking requirement of, of that particular use? So I'm here to answer any questions. That's kind of the gist of what had occurred over the past few months. Again, the planning commission has forwarded the proposed amendment language to city council for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Anyone like to make a motion to accept the laundromat ordinance?
I'll make a motion to accept the zoning text amendment for self-service laundromat facilities.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say, I was on the planning commission at the time that this language was being considered. The planning commission did consider extensively both parking considerations and the use of this, how this business will use the facility. So the fact that it calls out specifically differences to self-service laundromat is on purpose. It's designed to differentiate that type of business away from something like a dry cleaning business or other sorts of business. The intention is that the people who are actually using the facility are actually physically there doing their own laundry. And so that's why the parking is also an important consideration. So I just want people to be aware of the fact that all those types of questions, including storm, sewage water usage, right, the drainage from the machines, all those types of things were considered in the discussions of the planning commission when working with Giffords Webster to come up with this language.
Just to add to that, the, also on the planning commission at the time, we also talked, another reason why we made it for, for self-service laundry was so that caustic chemicals weren't being used as dry cleaners do. So that was another consideration.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Eric. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next will be the approval or consideration of council. Thank you. The council appointments to boards and commissions. These have to be individual, or do we have?
They should be individual.
Okay.
Okay.
So first up, we have the school board liaison, and I recommend to have Jalen be the Southfield Public Schools, school board liaison.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jalen Jennings as the Southfield Public School liaison.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next will be the appointment for the recreation board, and my recommendation is Dalton Barksdale.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dalton Barksdale as the recreation advisory board liaison.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next would be the appointment to the planning commission as the planning commission liaison from the council, and I recommend Jason Hammond.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jason Hammond as the planning commission liaison.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion?
I should have said gladly make the motion.
Well, I wouldn't have seconded that.
No, not really. Actually, it's, it's a good liaison position.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next, we'll have the, it's not really an appointment, but it's an add-on for the DDA board, and that is to make Bruce Cantor the alternate to me, being the regular person?
I'll make a motion to appoint Bruce Cantor as the alternate liaison to the DDA board.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And next, we have a council liaison for the tree committee, and I recommend myself for the tree committee.
Motion to appoint Kelly Garrett as the tree committee liaison, council liaison.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then there's one that's not on here, and that would be to the election commission. And I recommend Bruce Cantor for the election commission.
I'll move to appoint Bruce Cantor as the council liaison to the election commission.
I'd like to second that.
It's been moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And then when it comes to Sacra and Sacua, I think that that should be left open until the new city administrator comes aboard.
Did you want to mention the fact that we're going to make a new committee?
Oh, yeah, we're looking into, well, I mean, yeah, we can talk about it now, but I mean, we don't have it ironed out. There will be a new committee, and it's for inclusivity and accessibility. So it has to be ironed out more before really going into that.
Right.
City administrator report.
I just have a couple of things, Mayor. On December 22nd, the city offices will be closing at noon for the holiday luncheon that we usually have with staff. And then on, because the holiday falls on a Sunday, we usually get the following Monday off. So Sunday, or Sunday and Monday are the holidays. December 6th, the office will be closed, and January 2nd, the 2024, the office will be closed for the holidays. And that's all I have. You have the other report, and I'll let you do that during the mayor.
Do you want to wait until the end for your outgoing?
I can do it now, I mean.
Have at it.
I have a question.
When do I want to start? December 3rd is my last day, and I have enjoyed working here with most the resident, well, I should say with the residents. I have had a lot of people coming in and offering me their condolence, or not coming in. No, that they've been, a lot of them have been really sad that I'm leaving. But I think it's time. I think that, I hope that they will get a new city treasurer in here that will be able to take over. And I hope that the residents pull together as a community because there has been a lot of conflict the last couple of years. That's what's made my decision to retire. But I really feel that you guys have been great for 23 years, and these last two years have been really pulling the residents apart. And I think you, as residents, need to come together. And I hope that you're going to give the new city manager a chance. I hope you're going to give the new city finance person a chance to really pull the city together. So that's what I have to say. I mean, and I'm going to miss a lot of the residents here. And I've enjoyed working with this council. I've enjoyed working with my staff that I work with. I have to give kudos to all the people I work with down there. They work hard every day. They don't always get the recognition that they deserve, but I have been 100% enjoyed working with every one of them down there in the office, and the police department, too. We have, we have a great staff here, and if you guys can just keep this great staff going, that's the main thing. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks, Pam.
We'll have more to speak about on Wednesday.
No.
So we will. I'm going to give everyone their opportunity. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
City attorney?
Just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, safe holiday, Christmas, New Year's, and all that. Everyone, please enjoy it.
Thank you. We have a, reports from boards, commissions, and committees. It looks like we have one under infrastructure.
Yeah, so I'm going to be a huge buzzkill here because Kelly just moved this meeting right along, and I'm going to grind it to a halt here for, for a little bit. Yeah, we've just finished. Yeah, we've just finished, you know, two major infrastructure projects over the last three years, and so this should be the last infrastructure update from the last five years. So these projects have probably been the biggest projects that we've done in probably close to the last 50 years. We're pretty much done with the projects, so I'll talk a little bit about that. We did a three-year road project, and we did a three-year water and sewer project, otherwise known as the CIT project, the Capital Improvement Program. So starting off real quick, next slide, please. Starting off real quickly, just looking at what we did last year with respect to roads. We did 3.75 miles of roads with simple resurfacing, so we just ground off the top layer and added a new layer to refresh the road. We did do a special assessment for converting gravel to paved road for a group of residents, and as part of the process over all three years, as we did the various roads, we also reconditioned the ditches along the sides. And in this last project, 2023, we did have to replace 16 culverts, and then the last little box there shows that we did, as part of the 2023 project, do some significant alleyway work, although that is paid for by the DDA and not another bond. Next slide, please. So looking at the three years in total, from 2021 to 2023, again, great news here. We had only intended, when we designed the bond, to do 7.1 miles of road, but through some good management, some luck, some good bidding, you know, we ended up doing 8.34 miles, so we did about 17% more road work than, road repaving than we had originally intended. Next slide. In terms of the cost for the road bond, we pretty much were right on. We're estimating it to cost about 6.07 million. It actually cost 6.1 million, so we ended up pulling about $20,000 out of our road funds to cover that slight overage, but on a $6 million project, that's relatively insignificant. And so now what we need to do is begin looking for ways to start looking at and addressing some of the other street needs. I don't know how that's going to happen, but, you know, we're going to have to look into how do we continue the great success that we've had for the last three years. Moving into 2024, we'll go back to our normal non-bond road projects, and as we discussed at the last meeting, our city engineer talked about the fact that our 2024 project is going to be doing a portion of 11 mile in both directions from Southfield Road to the on-and-off ramps going to the west. And the reason why we chose that is because we have some opportunities for some truly significant savings, probably in the neighborhood of about $100,000, by piggybacking off of the road work that's going to happen next year by the Road Commission to repave Southfield Road. So we're going to join it with that and save the residents a lot of money in the process. Next slide, please. This slide, just, I'm not going to spend any time on it, but it basically just shows the PESR ratings. The PESR is essentially the quality ratings of the roads, and as you would expect, after three years of major road projects, you can see that the overall quality of our roads does increase pretty substantially. Moving on to the, to the Capital Improvement Bond, so again, another three-year project here to update our water and infrastructure, I'm sorry, our water and sewer infrastructure. With respect to water mains, as a lot of you know, just prior to the start of this project, we had just finished a major project for water main replacement on Santa Barbara, where we replaced over a mile of water main, and then we added during the three years another one and a half miles worth of water main. You can see the listing of streets that we addressed. The last two there, and I'll talk a lot more about this when I talk about the financials of the CIT bond, but the last two, San Diego and Lincoln, were projects that we added due to having extra funds in the project. So we did do a lot of extra work. Moving forward into 2024, we'll begin using our, since the bond is done, we'll begin using water and sewer funds again to do some water main replacements, and we have four of them slated, Roseland, Avila, Redwood, and Catalpa, and all four of those are from Latherton Boulevard to the east end of the city. Next slide. Fire hydrants. We did, we replaced 71 fire hydrants over the three-year project. We put in 18 new fire hydrants, and we refurbished two. I said we were almost done. We do have a little bit of extra, a little bit of remaining work to do for some of these items, one of them being the fire hydrants, because during the project, the fire hydrants were really hard to get a hold of and source, and so we still have 29 hydrants left to do, and we'll be doing those in the spring. Gate valve repairs, this was another really good story. Again, just some really sexy discussion here with respect to gate valves, but for those that don't know, the gate valves are the valves that we use to open and close various sections of water main, and our gate valves were 100 years old and in horrible condition. And so we have refurbished 83 of them. We installed 10 new gate valves where we didn't have them. But the really good news here is that when we wrote the bond, we were expecting to have to replace a large portion of our gate valves because they were so old and non-functional. But when we got into it, actually dug them up and started working, we were finding almost exclusively that we were able to refurbish them. And the reason why that's such great news is to replace a gate valve is about $6,500, to refurbish it is just a few hundred. So again, when we talk about the financials, you'll see we saved a lot of money there. The water service distribution system inventory, we talked a little bit about this in the study session. So Eagle, formerly the DNR, requires us as a city to identify the material that makes up all of our water lines, and there were a couple of approaches that we had to take based on Eagle's dictates, and one of them was we had to dig up 315 front lawns, basically by the sidewalk to get to the stop box, which is where the water main line meets the service line that runs to the house, and we had to visually inspect what kind of material that was. So we were required to do those diggings by the state, and so we did 315 of those. But we were also required to, for those same 315, to verify the material when it also comes into the house. And we've only done 100 of those. We still have 200 to do, and we talked about this in council, that this is a little bit of a risk point, because those have to be done by October of next year, and we did get a 230-some-odd-thousand-dollar grant to do a lot of this work. So we have to get those 200 done before October 16th, otherwise we risk some of the grant. Likewise, the remaining 1,200 homes and businesses throughout the city whose service line material we don't know were also required to identify their material by the end of October. So this is where we've been talking about urging people to do those self-tests, and I don't know if it's still on the website. Hopefully it is. Suzie's shaking her head yes. If you haven't done yours, you need people to do them, because otherwise we're going to have to get people into your homes, and it's going to cost us a lot of money per resident to be able to do that. So again, we talked about that during the study session as well, and we're going to be implementing some programs once we get the new city administrator to get those other 1,200 accomplished as well. Next slide. Lead and galvanized water abatement, so the city is required to replace, at our cost, any lead line or galvanized line that we find. We have to do 5% of the known offending material replacements, 5% every year for the next 20 years. The good news here, again, really good news, is so far to date, we've only found 24 lead lines in the city. So we found three through the stop box diggings, and we found 21 of them through the self-tests that people were doing in their basement. So we had expected a lot more, so that's good news. Next slide. Sanitary sewer, again, as part of the bond, we used a robot with a camera on it that goes through the sewer and basically cleaned, televised, and assessed all of that 32,000, essentially six miles of sewer. And then based upon that assessment, we actually did a cure-in-place piping on 11,000 feet of that line, which is basically where we build a new pipe inside the existing pipe. And then we also built eight new manholes as part of that project. Getting near the end here, the sanitary sewer retention tank. So for those people that don't know, everything that we flush down our toilets, everything we put in our sinks, you know, goes down towards 11 Mile and Evergreen, where we have this enormous buried tank underground. I can't remember, it's either 6 million or 60 million gallons, I always get it confused, but it's huge. And basis, what's that?
There's two of them.
Two. Yeah, we'll get into that in a minute. But the idea here is that when we have sewage that's coming in at a faster rate that we're illegally allowed to dump it out, that excess backs into the tank. And so we needed to make some significant upgrades to the tank, and so, in fact, we were under decree to do that from Eagle. And when this work is done in the spring, we'll be able to outflow three times faster, so the likelihood of us having any basement backups because of sewage backup will dramatically decrease. And then the sidewalk program, we replaced 6,100 blocks of sidewalk. So for those of you who are walkers, you know that it's a much safer walk now, because we don't have the sidewalks, you know, all over the place. So to kind of summarize from a financial perspective, so for the three years, again, through some good management, some regulation changes, and a bit of luck, we were grossly under budget on the water and sewer expenses. So there were several reasons for that. The first reason was we got a $232,000 grant, so we were actually, had somebody else pay for the work that we thought we were going to pay for. I mentioned the gate valves that we were able to refurbish versus replace. We had originally budgeted 1.1 million. We only were expecting, when those are done in the spring, to be at about 350,000. So we saved a lot of money there. The excavation regulations changed. So when we wrote the bond, those stop box excavations that I described, when we wrote the bond, the law required us to do every single home in Latherton. So we budgeted 1.1 million for that, and then when, after the bond was issued, slightly thereafter, they changed the law, and we only had to do 315, so we only spent $240,000 on that. Based on our experience and what we had seen in other cities, we had estimated over the three years that we would have to replace about $550,000 of lead lines, and we only had to do 160,000. And then the other big piece, and this was somewhat contentious, as some of you who are regular council meeting goers know, which was the water meters. So we had originally budgeted $860,000 to replace the water meters in the city. Of that, $120,000 was for water billing and reading technology, and we did spend that amount, and that system is being implemented as we speak. But the other remaining $740,000 was to replace the water meters, which we didn't do. And just as a little bit of a refresher, you know, I think everybody knows that we had a very high water loss rate for several years, and the city was meticulously working to eliminate potential causes one by one, using kind of a process of elimination. But as everybody knows, that's a very slow process, because all of our water assets are underground. You know, 33 miles of water mains, 250 gate valves, 1,800 service lines, and so on. So around the time that the recommendation was written, we had backed into no more options. And so, you know, based upon what we had talked about, talked to with our vendors and some consultants, the last culprit was the water meters, and we were especially kind of doubled down on that, for lack of a better term, because there was no evidence of actual physical water loss anywhere. And you would think that if you're losing 200,000 gallons of water a day, it's got to show somewhere, and we weren't seeing that. So what we were suspecting was that it wasn't actual water loss, but underbilling due to old meters that tend to slow down their reads as time goes on. So we then started professionally testing some of our water meters and basically found that they were reading accurately. We had a resident who also did an informal test on 20 additional water meters, and those were reading accurately. So then we turned to a water loss consultant who found some other things, but still not the smoking gun. And then, as I think a lot of people know the end of the story, we kind of serendipitously stumbled upon, you know, almost literally, the issue, which was a broken pipe in the bottom of a 10-foot pit over at the high school, and that pit had a drain at the bottom that went to the storm sewer. So all that water was just constantly pouring out into that drain and going out to sea, essentially, where we couldn't detect that loss. So kind of a long story, but that's why we ended up not spending the $740,000 on the water meters. And so the way that the bond was written was that any extra funds or funds that we needed to shift around could be shifted around to other projects, and as you know, we have a lot of high priority water infrastructure projects. So we did the extra work on Lincoln and San Diego, the cure and pipe placing that we talked about for 10,000 feet. That was an addition that we put into the project that wasn't originally scheduled, the dead-end manholes, and then the tank, the sanitary retention tank, that was actually $300,000 more than we expected, so we were able to absorb that cost. So just lastly, the original project, as spec'd out, was designed to cost $7.3 million. And $5.4 million of that was from the water bond that we issued, and 1.9 million of that was to come from the water and the sewer fund, so money that we've been saving in the water and sewer fund to do these kinds of projects. So we did all the intended work that we meant to, plus some significant additional work, and when all that was said and done, there was still $1.4 million in the water and sewer fund that we had intended on using that we didn't. So that money is still there, and so we can put that money towards future additional projects like the water mains that we're going to do next year off of Latherton Boulevard. So just want to thank the residents. I know it was a lot of work over three years and a lot of inconvenience and disruption, but I think we made some significant progress. If you drive around the city, you can see that a lot of the roads are much smoother. Those who walk have great sidewalks to walk on, and we have a much more reliable water system than we had three years ago. So thank you to everyone out there, and again, sorry for all the inconvenience, and sorry to make this meeting longer than it had to be, but especially when you were on such a roll.
I did it because I knew you were going to talk.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you for all the information. Next is unfinished or new business? I don't think we have any.
Would you, can we go to the council comment first?
No. Public comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. You can bring, you can speak about anything for three minutes. It is where you just come up and to the microphone, say whatever you like. It's not a discussion, just comments. Please state your name on them.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Garrett and City Council members and board members. My name is Roger, longtime resident of Latherton Village. During the last city council meeting of November 20th, the council broke away and took a private meeting, closed doors, and I want to say it was probably for, I don't know, 15 minutes or so, 20 minutes, you guys know better. During that period of time, you know, the residents were all talking and chatting, you know, carrying on normal conversations. Lo and behold, I learned later on that there was still a hot mic out there, not still available in this room. I don't know under such situations that when you guys break away, that the mic is turned off. But needless to say, I don't think it was. I know it wasn't, because I had somebody, you know, mention to me that they heard my whole conversation. So I guess in the future, when you guys break away, and I don't think that happens all that often, that whatever mic is on, that should also be turned off for the privacy of everybody. The other issue I want to bring up, Mayor Garrett mentioned the fact that she's on a Tree Committee, and I would be interested in also participating in that. Throw my name in the list of those who are interested in participating in that. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, mayor and council comments. Well, we were on a roll, but I do have a lot. So yes, we don't have it together yet, but there will be a form that goes out in January. Whoever wants to be on it, fill it out. Also, as many of you know, we were going through accreditation through the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. So I'm just going to read what the chief sent over. A team of assessors from the MLEAC were on-site December 13 through the 14th, 2023, to examine all aspects of the police department policies, procedures, management, operations, and support services. The team was verifying that the Latherton Village Police Department meets the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission's best practice standards. To reach accreditation status, the department must comply with 108 standards. Accreditation results in greater accountability within the agency, reduced risk and liability exposure, stronger defense against civil lawsuits, increased community advocacy, and more confidence in the agency's ability to operate efficiently and respond to community needs. During their onsite visit, the assessors reviewed written materials, interviewed agency members, and visited offices and other places where compliance with the standards can be observed. The assessors have completed their review of the agency, and they will report to the full commission, which will then decide if the agency is to be report to the full commission, which will then decide if the agency is to be granted accreditate accredited status. The department will appear in front of the MLEAC board in February 2024 at the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police Winter Conference to receive their accreditation certificate cer certification. So what that means is we did get a cra, we got certified for it. To the chagrin of some very nasty emails that came across, which I'm not even sure, though it came from the chief, I forgot, so nevermind. But just remember that even though you might not like me, or other council people, or the way that, you know, we didn't operate to your liking, just trying to discredit that the police department serves all of us. It has nothing to do with me or anyone else. And so I'm disappointed in it, but I'm very happy to know that regardless of the very nasty, vile emails that were sent to the body, the accredating, accrediting body, we still got the accreditation.
There's very few police op, police departments in the state that have that accreditation. So it's really special.
It's very, very much so.
Yeah. And one, one thing just to to mention on that, too, I've been looking at ways to increase our revenue. And one of the great things about being accredited is that we can get a break now on our, on our NML insurance. So that should, should help our our bottom line.
Thank you. And then I also got a correspondence from a resident. And I understand the resident is talking about another resident, but I'm not going to put the resident's name in there. So good afternoon, as it is from Mike Sampson. Good afternoon. As a 25-year resident of Lathir Village, I feel compelled to address a recent incident at the vintage village liquor store. Witnessing a resident approach the owner about a sign from it was disconcerting. It's con, it's concerning to see a fellow resident harassing business owners, city officials, and residents alike. This behavior reflects poorly on our city. I urge authorities to address this matter promptly to prevent further escalation. We need a harmonious community where where everyone can coexist peacefully. And also, what we need to talk about as a body is I would like to recommend that we consider Plant Moran to be our account, the accounting firm to take over where Pam was gonna leave off. I mean, something that we do need to discuss at our next meeting, or we actually need to, you know, we need to discuss at our next meeting, and we have need to have a special meeting for that.
Well, to approve it, we need a.
Yeah, you would have to approve it at a special meeting. You can discuss it during a study session.
All right. So we need to discuss that because just from some things in the audit that I saw, it would probably make sense that they would be hired to fill this gap of you being gone, because they can help us get the processes that they mentioned in the audit together, plus just get a, getting us to a good place. Then we can hire someone, because I would not want someone to come in off the street, too. So that's just my.
Actually, just plus the advantages also that they have done accounting services for us in the past. They're familiar with our systems. They can hit the ground running. And like I said, can fill the gap until we can get a permanent, permanent replacement for for Pam.
And so I just want you all to kind of think about that while we're on vacation. Are we on vacation? Sorry, our next, our next meeting. And then Wednesday, we are having a farewell. I don't want to say party, because I don't want anyone to miss this room. But we have a going-away gathering for Pam, which I am very sad to see that you go, but I totally understand of the why behind it. And so I think that your services have been invaluable, and that we're really losing someone that has a lot of institutional knowledge. And that's why I'm also saying what I said before about Plant Moran, as I thought about it. But you have been an exemplary employee to me, where you have gone above and beyond where most people wouldn't even expect you to. Thank you. So I appreciate you, and I wish you nothing but blessings in in your other adventures that may pop up. And then with that, I'm just saying happy holidays. I hope everyone has a fabulous holiday. I know I will be. I cannot wait, actually. So I won't say anything more than that. So that's all I have to have to say. Anyone else?
I got a few things. Go ahead.
No.
Okay. First off, one, one letter from Greg Rubelo for for public comment. So I guess I missed the public comment window, but I'll read it anyways.
I do, so it's okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah. So Greg states, Light Up Lathirup is our, is our night to shine. Let's come together again this year and display luminaries across the city. Light Up Lathirup is a one-night event that will take place on December 31st, 2023, starting at 6:00 PM. Last year's event was a huge success with over 2,100 luminaries lining our street, and it's expanding this year with many more participants. Please help spread the word to your neighbors so our entire city is glowing this year on New Year's Eve. For those who've, for those who have already donated, thank you for your generous donations. You may pick up your supplies in the lobby of City Hall. If you haven't donated and would like to participate, there's still time. Please visit lightuplathirup.com for details. Light up rate, Light Up Lathirup is a resident-driven and funded event. If you have any questions, please contact Greg Rubelo. His contact information can be found on the website, lightuplathirup.com. So there's that. Again, I just want to say, you know, for six years of working with Pam, it's been a pleasure. You've been helpful. I mean, the designing the road bond and the SIP bond couldn't have happened without you. You know, it's just great to be able to get all of our financial questions answered quickly. And it's just been a joy to work with you. So I want to wish you well, although I'm still gonna see you for another two weeks, and we're gonna be meeting a lot. So but, and then the other thing, I just kind of want to build off of what, one of the things that that Kelly read about what happened at, it was at Danny's. We've had, in in the last couple of weeks, a lot of incidents of of residents interfering with the day-to-day operations of the city. And and people really need to think before before they do things like that. And, you know, we had somebody going in and asking for a permit. We've had an example of of a couple of different people, a couple of residents calling our auditors, trying to get pre-release copies of the audit. You know, they were obviously smart enough to know to say, sorry, but you're just gonna have to wait till it goes public. We've had incidents of individuals calling our technology provider, trying to get copies of emails. You know, there's a proper procedure for doing that. If people want copies of emails, you know, we're a fully transparent city. If you want copies of emails, you can get them. They have to be follow the right process, which is the FOIA process. You know, we had some residents contact Clearly Amazing, which is the group that did the the decorations, who weren't satisfied with the decorations. And they were, they, they actually talked to the the supervisor, and they were texting with the supervisor. They came out to do more work. We didn't know about it. So, you know, if if you have issues with things that are happening in the city, or the thing that things that the city are doing, you know, that your first stop is the front desk or the city administrator. If you're not getting what you want, you can contact any of us or, you know, to try and help you. But but inserting yourself between, you know, us and and the vendors is is just not the the right thing to do. It's not the appropriate thing to do. It'd be like me going to somebody's doctor and saying, hey, I want to find out more about this resident, what what services they had done. I mean, it's just completely inappropriate. So we need to, we need to make sure that stops so that the city can run efficiently. I mean, we're not even allowed to get involved in the day-to-day business of the of the city. That's totally the administration's role, let, let alone residents doing that. So we really appreciate, you know, people understanding that. And then with that, I just want to say happy holidays to everybody. You know, hope you have a he, healthy, happy holiday, and a happy new year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have something.
Harry.
Okay. I have something.
Yes.
So I wanted to extend kudos to the Infrastructure Committee for all the work that Bruce outlined in his presentation about what the Infrastructure Committee and and our vendors have done, and Giffords Webster supporting that effort. It got a lot, a lot of work done. I love my new road. But there's more to do. So we can expect to see a lot more focus on how do we continue to take the momentum from the infrastructure projects and turn them into more improvements in our infrastructure in the city. So I just, people should be unaware of that. That I don't know what it's gonna happen. It's something that the city council is gonna have to consider in 2024. How do we go about doing that? We'll work with the new city administrator and their staff to to get that done. I also want to thank Pam for everything that you've done over the 20 years I've lived in the city. I just want you to know that it's is appreciated by very many of us. I know I speak for a lot of people. You've already heard from a couple tonight, and you will be missed. And we're really thankful for everything you've done for our city. So thank you, and best of luck to you. And happy holidays to everybody. Have a great Christmas and a happy new year. Thanks.
One second. Is there, is there anyone else that you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just had a few things. I wanted to say, I definitely agree with us hiring Plant Moran, because I, I wanted to hire Plant Moran instead of another outside auditing firm. So that's, that's a good thing, because I just want to make sure that we're looking at those recommendations and seeing if we can fix those for next year. And then also, I want to ask for us as a council for the consent agenda to please, if you do have something you want to point out to the consent agenda, like tell Kelda ahead of time, if you can, and then bring it back up. She already knows, and she's aware she might have made the change already. So that's all that I wanted to say. And happy holidays to everybody. And then Pam, I love you. Yeah. Thank you for everything that you do. And I wish you the best. Take care. That's it.
Thank you. I would like to, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll take a, make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We are adjourned. Happy holidays.